Excellent. Good evening. This is Mary DeCoursey, Chair of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm calling our meeting to order at 6:32 on Wednesday, November 3, 2021. This is an open meeting of the Auburn Public Library Board of Trustees. It is being conducted in a hybrid model in order to allow members of the community to join us at Auburn Town Hall in the planning room or to join us remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location due to the COVID-19 virus. The agenda that includes the link, the telephone number and the access code was posted on the Auburn Town website initially on Thursday, October 7, and then again on October 29, 2021. Permit me to confirm that all members of this body are in persons anticipated in the agenda are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Matt Toth, I believe he's on his way. Suzette Dowd?
Present.
Jennifer Shea?
Present.
Erica Briesaker?
Present.
Did I say it correctly?
Yes.
Awesome. And Mary DeCoursey, I'm present. Town employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jean Collins, Library Director?
Present.
Great. Please note that this meeting again is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television as well as on the computer that's in front of me. So we're going to move to the first item on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes. I've provided everybody with minutes from September 13 meeting at 6:15. That was at the library. Our joint session with the Board of Selectmen and our October 6 meeting, which was actually in the Selectmen's Room in the Selectmen Chamber. So if everybody could just review for a minute. Okay, starting with September 13 meeting minutes from 6:15. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes or any commentary? Sorry, you guys are on your computer. Okay.
As is.
As is.
Second.
And that will be second with me, Jen. Okay, great. Thank you. Very good. When we move to the September 13 meeting minutes for the 7:00 PM Selectmen meeting. Matt Toth is now present. So what we're doing right now is we're looking at the minutes. These are the September 13 Board of Selectmen minutes. And we had just approved the September 13 meeting minutes. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as is. Do I have a second? Great. So is that Suzette and Jen? So those are the second minutes. I don't have to do a roll call for minutes, do I? Still, sorry, still rusty on this. And then we're going to look at the October 6 minutes, which that was a meeting that we had at the library on October 6. Could you get enough time there, Matt?
Yeah.
I think a motion that we accept as is.
Sure.
And Matt, second. Thank you. Very good. The next item on the agenda is the Director's Report. Okay, let's see things. Under Facility, as you all know, we've been continuously, I'm just going to take this off so you can hear me clearly, continuously revamping, you know, looking to see patterns for usage. Now that we've upped our paperback collection considerably, there's a lot more circulation going on with paperbacks. We just don't have room for everything, so we had to cut down large print, which really was taking up a lot of space anyways. And we moved the paperbacks over there because they're easier to get to. And then we had more room on the other section for the newest ones in print, for fiction, nonfiction, whatsoever. So we did move that around a little bit. We continue to expand and transition to newer and relevant collections. That's across the whole library in every area. Our Vox books circulate all the time, more all the time, and we've outgrown the space. So I asked DPW, when they have time, sometimes over the winter they might have time, they're going to build another shelf. So that is right there in the children's section, so we'll have some more room there. We transitioned the Halloween section over to Thanksgiving, and we're now working on collecting for some new titles for the holidays. Having it right there in that one section has really circulated. They go out all the time. We limit them to 10 days with no renewals, so they can come back because it's a short circulation time. And that's worked really, really well. So right now, we're just putting up Thanksgiving ones, and we'll keep doing that for whatever holidays are coming up. The garage floor, some of you saw it, the storage area that was for us, but meant we could move some of the things on the top, giving a little bit of space that we could for the Friends. So we were very lucky to be able to get them to do that because usually you have to put these in for DPW for a long time in advance, but it wasn't a huge job, and I was able to find the funds. So Suzette, you saw it.
More room than we've ever had.
Yeah, more room than we had to do it. So hopefully, you know, the rest of that will, you know, continue to move forward. I purchased a new, the old rounder that we had in the foyer was broken, and it didn't turn, and it was horrible. So after, so we just got rid of it during COVID because no one could come in anyways. But then it's harder to find a new one than you think and to actually receive it. So we did get one. It's a triangular shape. I'm not real sold on it. We're still trying to figure out how best to put it there. There's just no space. You can't put a lot of things in there. It becomes a tripping hazard. We're trying to keep the space over there to the left for the Friends when they can get their foyer, you know, book sales. So we're working on that. But one section will be for the library and any town business. We're required to post things for the town and maybe have the other side for people to post things as they want to for the general public. It's not a lot, but it's what we can do.
Does the policy that we have protect you from anybody wanting to put something on that?
I don't know. I haven't looked at it. The way we're doing it now, and we probably can just continue to do this until we figure out how we want to do that moving forward, anybody who wants anything posted has to leave it for the Director to review. So because space was so limited, I would give preference to Auburn businesses or to nonprofits and so forth. So I think we can continue to do that until we decide how we want to manage it moving forward. That way, you know, sometimes there's things, businesses in Worcester, and you know, I just can't give the space over to other places. So until we want to make a different decision, I think we can continue with that until we review the policy, if that's okay with everybody.
I just, I was just hoping that we don't have trouble like we had in the past where there are certain kinds of groups that you just don't want having access to a bulletin board.
Well, that would be where, you know, you'd have to, you can't say what groups those are or anything.
No.
But you can, you can keep it to nonprofits. That certainly would eliminate some things. A lot of people want to put job postings up and, you know, so I think you want to just see where you want, I think that's a policy you all can be involved in, just see what you want to do.
Because we haven't been there, and I kind of been out lately. Is it lock and key, like so someone can just put a bulletin board completely exposed?
No.
And anyone can feasibly put something up there?
Yeah, they don't. They've been pretty good. Every once in a while, if somebody does, no matter what it is, I take it off because you didn't follow our protocol and ask permission. So I think if we keep that for now until we decide what we're going to do, I'm not sold on the bulletin board. It's a triangular shape, and it's not great. I don't, there's no wall space to fix anything, too. So I'm still trying to figure that out, and they can't post anything like on the library town side. I did post the Hanover, like that's valid. I always posted those anyways. So I think that's where you want to see where you can't make a restriction against any particular company, but you can say, you know, nonprofit only, Auburn businesses only, or, you know, things like that.
You make that into a clerical party, you know? You put that right on that thing.
Yeah.
Then it's related to a program at the library.
Right. Yeah, I mean, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with, you know, putting that up. So I think it's kind of a work in progress to see what we're going to do. There's not that much space, and the foyer is not that big either. And if they're going to get to the Friends foyer where the books are, it's going to be in the way. So I haven't figured it all out yet. So in terms of, I thought that I would address the issue with the hours a little bit so that you can, you can kind of understand where I'm coming from, where Julie and I are coming from, and I'm sorry, I left my notes somewhere on my desk. Do you need one of your? No, I have, this is, I just wanted you to know, it wasn't a spur of the moment decision. This was a data-driven decision, and it's a temporary decision. So that's different from a permanent decision about the hours. It is an operational decision, so it is Julie's authority to make the decision about the hours. In order to do this, we did an analysis of seven weeks from 7 to 8:00 PM. Point 06 people came in during those hours. So there's always, you have to consider allocation of resources for any business, and it's not good business to have people seven to eight.
Well, those were the first seven weeks that it was open?
From 7 to 8.
So it was the, it would be love.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, it wasn't, we were open before that, then we extended it, and then we did the, it was seven weeks that we were open. We weren't open until 8 right away. That was after. That was after. So no, sorry, it wasn't, it wasn't the first ones.
No, that's not what I'm asking, though. I'm asking, when the library opened after COVID in person, people could come in and not just pick up books, is that when you were collecting your data?
No, because we weren't open 7 to 8 at the time. I believe we opened, we started opening six.
When were you opening from 7 to 8?
I don't have the dates in front of me. That was on my other paper. It was September through December.
But it was right at the beginning, right?
You know, it doesn't matter, and it's, you can't, you can't. No, as a matter of fact, even between 6 and 7 now is decreasing. And once the hours change, it decreases even more. There's most libraries are not back up to pre-COVID patron use. No library that I know is. So I have to weigh all that. We did also look at 35 other libraries just to compare, and I will say that Auburn compares very favorably with what we're doing. Out of those 35, 13 libraries were open six days a week. We are open six days a week. Nine libraries were open 50 or more hours per week. We are open 50 or more hours per week. 24 libraries were open until 8 for one to four evenings. We are not, however. Every one of those libraries staggered their opening time. So they were opening at 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, 12:00, 1:00, 1:30. So they took it off the other end. That doesn't serve us well. Our patrons want to be there by, you know, 9:30 or 10:00. They want to come into the library. That's when the bigger use is for Auburn. Every library is different. It kind of depends if you're a walk-up library or, you know, your community is different. So for us, that's really what makes the most sense. 21 libraries were open on some Saturday hours, as we are. So we really did very well in terms of meeting a lot of the expectations. Out of those 21, 11 of those were closed another day. So they might have opened Saturday, but they closed on Monday. We do not. We're still open six days a week. So in terms of all of these, the decision really made the most sense to reallocate our resources, staffing resources, and, you know, even safety issues to people in the building, nobody comes in, you know, that's always a little bit of a concern. Weather coming in, bad weather, DPW has to still come by and salt and do all those things, too, in the winter. So again, this is going to be reassessed in December, and I just wanted to give you a little bit of, you know, it wasn't a spur of the moment decision. We did look at all of these things to figure out what was the most effective use of our resources and to reassess in December. Certainly not permanent. At some point, we'll be open again back until 8:00 PM.
Okay, thanks for the update. I don't think any of us thought it was a spur of the moment decision. What I think is sometimes lacking is the open communication between the town, the library, and the orgies about changes, particularly with COVID. Now, I recognize when COVID started that maybe there wasn't the time because immediate decisions had to be made back in March of 2020 that we couldn't have those conversations. So I think that's one piece. And then to Suzette's comment, running data in the middle of the pandemic still when things are closed and people aren't really aware, I mean, where I'm working, I still get inquiries, is it open, is it not? Do we think there's a very big confusion amongst society at large of like, what is open, what isn't open?
And it changes all the time.
What is that? So to say it's necessarily data-driven, we're not necessarily getting the full data because we're in a weird sample size of maybe people who know, those who would come might not know, those who may be adjusting would make their plans, but they haven't heard yet. So I think that's where the comment was like, are we really actually getting true data? Or if we just said, let's actually open for whatever timeframe we thought might be useful, we could see that.
My concern is for people who work till 6.
But they can come until 7. We're open until 7.
I know.
And anybody who wanted something and it hasn't happened, or a group was still there, we stay open. If anybody says, I just can't get there, we're there. I do the same thing in the morning. Somebody says, I have to pick it up at 7. I'm there at 7. So we're, when we hear about those, and it's very rare, then we accommodate it. So everybody's doing the best they can. Certainly, we are as well. And like Jen said, things are open. I know a lot of libraries open, then close, then change their hours, then change it back. We're trying not to do that. We're trying to stay consistent, and I think we're doing that. So that's, it's data-driven, also common sense. Things do change quickly. Some of the things that we found out about mask mandates and all that came down from the state and then trickles down to us, sometimes very quick turnaround. So I feel like we did the best we could at the right timeframe that we had available for us to look at, so.
I'm still not happy with that. I wish that it could be open till 8. We don't have any place for people in town to meet that can go until 8 o'clock. I know they can, everybody can ask, but nobody likes asking. The other part of this that seems difficult for me to understand is the whole question of staffing when we've got so many openings, and I don't see them advertised anyplace. So that must be some other kind of decision that's being made, and I'm not sure I understand why that has to be secret, why the Board of Trustees can't know we're not going to hire those four people. We're looking for those four people, and we've advertised for them in, on the Auburn site, MBLC. Those are the things that don't make any sense to me, and we're being told that we can't ask those questions. Is that correct?
What is your actual question?
Well, the actual question is, some of this is based on staffing.
Correct.
And there are at least four vacancies from what the town manager said, and I don't see that those are being advertised for any place. And that's the part that doesn't seem to make sense.
Okay. So the staffing, as you all know, is not under authority of the Board, but I'll give you as much as a general explanation as I can. There are currently three openings. We do have two fairly new employees at the time. Now, it takes at least a year. Everybody's under probation for a year in the town. It takes a long time to learn. You really can't have a whole lot of new employees at one time. It's going well. We are considering where to go next, as every library is doing this, and one of the reasons why I said I'm helping with research questions is libraries have to sort of readjust. Where are they going to do? What skill sets do people need? You need different skill sets now to work in a library. We need to do different things with the library, and we will continue to do that. So that's always on my mind, is how does, what does the next position look like? And it may very well be an administrative position, and it probably is going to be mid to late spring or early summer. But there's budget considerations for making, making some shifts. We're always thinking about that, always, always discussing with Julie, and we will be moving forward with that. But right now, we're, where we need to be right now, we're still looking to see what patterns of use the library will, you know, will be receiving in the, in the future. Maybe we're not going to get much. We're about 700 people a week walk in, which is low for us. But we're going into the winter, and people are still waiting for like, is COVID over? Is it not over? You know, is it safe to go? You know, we just, people don't know. So I'm waiting to see all that because I don't want to put positions out that don't meet what we're going to need in the future. So it's a measured response. We are building. We have a great staff right now. We're all working as many hours as we can, and I really, we're doing a really good job as far as I can see. And we will be filling the other positions. They're in the budget. We just have, can't do them all at once. Doesn't make any sense. No library is doing that, and libraries are no different from every other organization in the world, it seems like. Where are the workers? And, you know, where do you need them? Do you not need them? Do you lay them off? We don't want to be in that position. So we're just taking the measured approach.
Can you tell me where they'll be advertised when they are open?
They're always on the MBLC.
Nothing on the Auburn site?
Not on our libraries. I sometimes send it to.
You don't mean the town?
Yeah, sometimes I do put there as well.
Thanks for the update, Jean. I think that's what we're, we're trying to get at. We don't, we don't know that information. Not that we're trying to say we want to be a part of the conversation or the decision there, but getting the context is really, is really helpful just to know what's going to say, I think comes with, that it just wasn't shared, that decisions happen, but we find out with the rest of the public. And then if someone comes to us and says, hey, why didn't you know about this? Like, we just found out, too. We don't have that ability to kind of really be the conduit to support as the board thinks. I think that's what, what is sometimes a barrier there. So thank you for the update. That was very helpful to hear, and all new information for me that I'm glad to absorb and take in.
Well, and the other thing, too, is this is all new to me, too. You know, we had, we were on a great roll, 71,000 people a year coming into the library, and then everything shut down. It's much, much harder to restart and figure out where you're going next than it is to shut down. And so we're, you know, this is all, I'm always looking at this. I'm looking to do cross-training, where do we need positions? So this is kind of a new place for us, too. Before, there were the standard positions, and now we're needing to look at them different. And I can't go into a lot of detail because then it talks, there's a gray area, as the Board of Selectmen said. So I'm happy if you feel better about it. That's great.
I think that's context I didn't know, that is just helpful in general.
Yeah, I agree.
I know I'm one of a board, but that is just insightful enough for me to say, okay, now I have a little bit more. I'm not questioning which one or how or what. I just like to know.
I wouldn't be able to put this on my Director's Report because it's not something I would generally share a lot of with the Board. But if you have a legitimate question, like hopefully I answered that tonight without going too far into the other side of it, so, okay. Does anybody else have any questions about that? No? Okay. So the mask mandate, we have, we have not had, we have one minor issue with the mask mandate, but I'll be comfortable saying 100% compliance with the mask mandate. But we, we work hard at that. We've got masks right outside the door, adults and children, and we've got them right inside the door, and then we've got them on the circulation desk, and we've got them in the children's room. So a lot of times, people aren't used to wearing their masks everywhere, so they take them. So we were able to get quite a number of masks from the CARES Act, and so we're able to, to have them there for people, which certainly helps because they forget to bring them. And nobody has complained really except, you know, one person. They put them on, and it's, and it's working well. We don't have a lot of problems, fingers crossed. So the Friends had their first meeting in the library. I do serve as liaison with Linda, who's the president of the Friends. We met again today, as a matter of fact. I'm, I'm hoping they can sort of, you know, get, you know, get going with everything. I have to be very careful. It's conflict of interest. I can't certainly help them fundraise or do any of that, or their, or their clerical work or anything like that. But I was able to find them workspace, and we had some discussions today about when the donations start coming in, that really should be a Friends thing. I will go as far as I can with helping because I really do want to help them succeed with that. But Linda's great to work with, and I really think that they can probably, you know, move forward with that. The, the space, you can't really see, it's a little picture here, but there's a heater there. I did, I think it was you, Suzette, who mentioned some anti-fatigue, so we do have those. You saw those.
Just standing on cement.
Yeah, yeah.
Way down.
So then we were doing it.
Right.
I should, I should clarify that a little bit. We did it before because there wasn't an active Friends group. So rather than not do anything, but then it all shut down. We couldn't accept donations during COVID, so it's a good time to start up, and now there's an active Friend group, so we can't do anything. There's a few things I'll do to help, but we have to be, we have to be careful with that. So we only had a little tiny part of that space, so you guys have a better one. Okay. So research questions, I just thought I would just, certainly from me, and I don't know if any of you looked at the hours reports or the state reports, they're hard to decipher. There's a million different ways to answer them, and every library is different depending on their governance. So I was asked to be part of a small research committee where we're rewriting some of the research questions. It's at the federal level. Once they're approved there, they go down to the state level against, eventually they'll get down, you know, to our level. So it's kind of nice to be involved in that because the current language is very, two libraries can report the same thing but report it very differently. So at the end of the day, your data is, you know, kind of not always that valid. Collaborations and partnerships, so Chamber of Commerce, they're taking down the Scarecrow display now. It was wonderful having them out there. I mean, we got so many very positive comments, people who thought it was the library, and we have to say, no, the Chamber of Commerce did the heavy lifting. We just partnered with them and helped to promote it and allowed the space. I actually had a little bit of a discussion with, with the liaison there, and I think they should do a spring one. And if they do, then we'll do one, too. So it was, people really enjoyed seeing them. They'd come over, they were at a game on the weekend or something, they'd still take a walk over and see them. So that worked out well for everybody. The Story Walk, so that's up and running. You can't really see it too much here, but really it's a series of stands that tell the story of the rainbow fish. And at the end, people can use a QR code, or they can call us, and they get a literacy packet that goes with the theme. So we'll be swapping that out every three weeks. They've been great to work with. They supplied all these colored mats underneath the stands, which was great, and they've done some promotions for it as well. Her name's Lexi, who I work with there. She said there's been a lot of people looking at them because she's at the mall, she's in mall promotions. So that's nice. It's nice to get out there a little bit where we can't dedicate staff to it, but we were able to do this, and it's nice to get out there in the community a little bit. I already talked about that. The Vax Bus, which is, Board of Health certainly did all the heavy lifting with that. We just put a sign up there and, and, you know, connected with them.
It's officially word now. Vax is officially word now.
It is.
Yes. I saw that.
So that was pretty successful. I know it was for me. I just went right out the door and come back. I know. It's good. I don't know if they'll have any more or not, but I'm wide open to it. Darlene calls me, and it's like, yes, absolutely. Awesome. So I'm working with the schools, a little bit with the reading specialist. They're not sure yet if they can have people back into the schools to read, and if not, that's okay, too. We've always had the children come to the library, but they can't get on the buses and come and do that anymore, maybe by next year, but not yet. So we're working out where we can get the cards to children there, but we have to do But we have to do a lot of who already has a card, who doesn't have one. And I'd still like to get them books and maybe some literacy packets. So I'm working with her. We'll see what we can do. They might let some of us in to read a story. Not sure. That would be great if we can. It's really nice to do that because when you're there, a lot of the kids will say, I saw you at the library. They're so happy to see you like outside the library too. And it's really nice. So we're working on that. I just put this in there under technology just because it is one more thing that we add to our plate is now we're updating the town calendar in addition to our ours. And it makes sense because IT can't, it's hard for them to keep up with all those. So it was a little bit of a learning curve, but we're, we're good with that. We just have to remember to do all the calendars. Programs, we continue to offer the Child the Program every week. I split it into Tuesday and Wednesday. Sometimes it'll be Wednesday and Thursday, a couple of different days. Both days have been filled, so they're still, you know.
Can they go to both?
I don't know why they'd want to, but they can.
It's the same program?
Yeah. I do put some sort of disclaimer because you really don't want to take a spot from somebody who can come the other day. And as it is, we have waiting lists still.
Good.
So, and working on rebuilding, we have to rebuild everything. The pre-K ones are also well-attended, so we're just ramping up with those. We have one this Friday as well. Upper, upcoming programs, which I had mentioned, I think, before, the ones on Tai Chi and Kung Fu, Hands Our Nature, we'll be doing two fall programs. This one I'm really excited about as I was speaking with, she was out in Montana, Montana when I was speaking with her. She travels the country. She was a Iditarod racer with her dogs. So I'm hoping she comes in the spring, they can be outside and we can have more people come. So I'm looking forward to that one. The Nutcracker, they don't charge anything. This is a partnership. So Clara will be coming to the library to read a story. And then she'll do a little bit of her dance and then some of the children will be invited to, to dance as well. Venus is always, you know, well-intended. We're doing a snowman craft. Amanda Goodheart, I don't know if any of you, I don't think any of you attended. We had her come before to do Rosie the Riveter and she did a great job. So she's coming back to do this one, Seven Sisters, the World War. Two contributions from women from the Seven Sister Colleges. And then we're having her come back in February to do Sweethearts at Sea around Valentine's Day. Seemed like a good day.
Can I just ask a question about that? First of all, I love all the partnerships. Big fan. But when you talk about the presentation from Amanda Goodheart, is she doing sort of a PowerPoint or is it sort of a dramatic presentation? Like what type of presentation?
She is, it's sort of a combination between a PowerPoint and her just, she has a PhD in history, I think. And so it's, I wouldn't call it a lecture because it's not dry at all. But it's not a reenactment like some of them are. We've had those as well. So this one is not. But she definitely knows a lot about it and she does sort of, the slides are kind of like supplemental to sort of draw into the story.
So it's a more adult-focused presentation?
Definitely.
Yeah, okay.
And so I have the bill scheduled here. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
I just wondered what the New England Quilt Museum thing is.
That's a museum pass?
Oh, the pass.
Yeah, so we're slowly ramping back up with the museum passes. But even museums are so many restrictions. They're open, they're closed, they're only open three days.
Now, what museums do we have passes for now?
Right now, we only have DCR, the New England Museum, I'm drawing a blank now. Butterfly Place, but I think they closed down for the season. It's really only four. American Heritage.
You do have American Heritage?
Yes. No.
No?
Help me out, Molly. What's the other one? I'm sorry.
Do you have American Heritage?
I'm thinking of.
That's not one of our.
No, it's not American Heritage.
Animal Adventures.
Animal Adventures, thank you. That's the zoo.
Thanks, Molly.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, it's where we went with my family. I can't remember the name of it, but they have a butterfly exhibit. Is that what we're referring to?
No, I think it's Southwick Animal.
Southwick, that's what I was trying.
We did have that one this summer, but they're not open anymore.
Slipped my mind.
So we're, I'm really hoping next summer, we had, Erica probably doesn't know this. We had more than anybody in the state with 47 museum passes and saved our patrons more than $30,000 a year. Very widely used. But it's going to take a while to ramp that back up. And I'm not going to pay for passes if people can't get the full experience or they're still, they don't want to go masked or they, you know, there were just too many restrictions. And it's very time-consuming to manage all those passes too. So we're really hoping next year, we're all hoping next year is, is, you know, back to normal again, so.
Do you still have the Equatorial now?
No. They were only open a couple of days a week, as I knew.
Anybody have any questions? Love the Director's Report. What bill schedule? No? Okay, the next item on the agenda is trustees' questions, new business, old business. In our last meeting, we had a unanimous approval to include a letter that Matt sent to the, to the Board of Selectmen. And he was kind enough to provide that to everyone. I didn't know if anybody had any questions about it or Matt, if you had any commentary that you wanted to make.
No, I was just glad that the entire board approved the letter, approved the letter. And that, that maybe ought to be a note to the Board of Selectmen that the entire.
Unanimous, okay. Absolutely.
That the Board of Trustees reviewed the letter and supported it. That's the only reason I wanted to bring that up.
Okay, very good. Anything else from the board? And we will move to the next. Can we have an update, Suzette, on the Friends of Auburn Public Library?
Okay, we.
Sorry to interrupt you there. We did talk about this in the October 6 minutes, the letter.
Yeah, we've mentioned it, but we did not, we didn't talk about.
It was a BOS letter. Dow made motion to include letter in minutes, was seconded by Erica, unanimously approved.
Right. That was never sent to the, to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I will make sure that happens.
I'm pretty sure it was.
The letter was sent to the board, the approval of the entire trustee group.
Thank you.
Okay, the Friends met on Monday, October 25th at 6 o'clock. Was very well received. We have offices, a lot of them come from, not a lot, several come from the book club and the knitters were present. The next meeting's going to be November 15th. And we're setting up a calendar to sell the books, you know, to come and clean the books and wipe them down, check which ones are good, which ones are going to be dead. Getting rid of and categorize them. And we decided that we wanted to up the dues for pens. On the website, it says $5 and people thought 20 was a lot more likely. I don't think we ever collected, as far as I was on the board, I don't think we ever collected any money for, or it would be just, you know.
The only thing I know, the materials that I saw, there were probably eight or nine that had.
Donated.
Had donated probably the $5. And actually there's a $5 bill that's still in the deposit pouch that whoever, whenever the.
It was last deposit.
Actually, whenever we get reinstated, that that money can go in at Sabres. It could actually go in now, but it's hardly worth putting five bucks in there. So that's all I have.
We wrote two grants from the Auburn Cultural Commission. They haven't heard anything, but they said to hear in November sometime.
And just clarification on that, we had some issues with the website, so that's why we put it off. So there was an extension to the, to the, you know, grant, receiving grant, so.
It was extended to November 1st. We had already submitted it before.
Yep.
October 15th.
Great.
You know, everybody seemed enthusiastic.
Very excited.
A whole new group of people that are excited to get involved.
Yeah.
Which is nice.
It's really good.
And I just want to say, because I was there, obviously, I just was really appreciative about the energy, the fact that there's such a commitment to all these members on the board. I really appreciated the opportunity to go with Jean into the, you know, the storage area and to be able to kind of get to know the library better. So I just, and Linda, I'm just, she's just really.
She has so many ideas.
She's the right person.
She is the right person.
Yeah, she really is.
She's got a lot of energy and a lot of great ideas and she wants to, you know, get it going.
Yeah, I like her style. Does anybody have any other questions about that or comments? Okay, the next item on the agenda is email from the town manager. We all received an email. Probably it was not this Sunday, this Sunday, maybe about a week ago. And I just want to say, from the chair position, I'm doing a lot of plan ignoring. Every time these, I get these emails about open meeting laws because I was taught as a teenager from my mentor. He used to say, you can't get a goat if there ain't a goat to get. And there ain't a goat to get. So I'm not even going to address formally the open meeting law emails that we keep sending, that we keep receiving. But I wanted to open it up for the team if you have any commentary about that.
Well, I was trying to figure it out, you know? I'm saying, what do we do? You know, who did?
I get a lot of these and I've learned to just ignore them because it's just, that doesn't apply. So it's just not, it's just that it doesn't apply.
You know, Madam Chair, as you're called, and members of the trustees. I am really tiring of these recycled educational misses with underlying threats. And they should stop immediately.
I agree.
Unless somebody is ready to file a complaint. In the summer of June 2020, when accusations of open meeting laws occurred, I had to get my own legal help at real personal cost because an accusation was made, an investigation against volunteers, the board was initiated. I responded to those requests without legal advice. And by the time I realized I should have never responded, it was too late. Never again will I, and I hope the fellow board members will do the same, ever respond to these bogus investigations demanding our emails, our phone activity, or personal conversations from the town manager or town council without a formal legal complaint. I'm asking you as the chair to request the town manager not issue us with pages of recycled educational information believing that we can be threatened. We can read, we can understand what's going on. So please, Madam Chair, have the town manager just stop it. File a complaint, get someone else to file a complaint. We've experienced that before. Or be silent.
Okay.
This really, I have a way I'd like to say it, but I'm not going to say it publicly.
Okay.
I am, the same stuff over and over and over again. And we're supposed to have somebody here. Well, file a complaint and then we'll see. We'll get each get our lawyers and see what's going on here.
The only thing I want to add to that is I think, I have another mentor, I have lots of mentors. I think it's a good idea to have mentors in your life. Somebody used to say to me, there's a problem sometimes when people are confused about their roles. And I think these emails that I keep getting, they're, they give me the impression that I work for the town and I'm being sort of corrected, which is why I'm ignoring them. The, a town manager is employed by the town. I'm not employed by the town. And we are volunteers. So it would be my expectation that we would be treated with the respect that any volunteer, committed volunteer is treated with in any community. So I will send a request to the town manager. I'm also going to CC the Board of Selectmen because it's gotten very redundant and it's gotten very accusatory and it just needs to cease immediately. Does anybody have any other questions or comments about that? Thank you. So the next item, we talked about discussing the September 13 unanimous vote to return library hours to pre-COVID hours. We talked about that and Jean covered that. Does anybody wish to discuss that any further?
No, I, I don't disagree with what Jen said, but I really disagree with not having those hours. And the staffing that would be appropriate to make sure that we can have some days that were open at least till 8 o'clock. But I, I understand it's gone, it's dead.
If I could interject something? Sure. It may very well be that when we ramp back up, we'll start with one evening until maybe, you know, 8 and then see how that goes and then rebuild it. I mean, you just can't do it 100% all at once. We have to do what makes sense now. And then we continue to look at, at patterns and need and then we will, we will, this is temporary. Well, you can't just do it all at once. It was always intended to be temporary. We just have to do what makes sense. Just like a lot of restaurants and a lot of businesses, they're cutting back for multiple reasons and libraries are the same.
I think the update is, it was extremely helpful. You confirming, I think, maybe three times you've said temporary now. I think that's just a reinforced piece that information we didn't originally have. You have provided us context today that has shed additional light, even though we all would agree that, you know, we'd love to see the hours be extended and have that greater flexibility. We now actually have additional information that can, as Matt just said, we understand where it stands, but at least we have some context that we.
And well, we had always, we had always said it would be reassessed, reassessed in December. We don't know yet what that answer will be. It will be partially data-driven, partially common sense, partially no bad winter, really. To have two people in an empty building does not make any sense. Not when you have to reallocate the resources elsewhere, so.
I just want to remind, does anybody have anything else? I don't want to step on anybody.
Not about this. I have something else I just wanted to mention.
Go ahead.
This, I don't know, have some of you seen the web junction that comes online from the libraries? It is, I'll send you a copy then. Maybe you're not on the list yet to get that, Erica.
Or maybe I am and I'm just catching up on all the things that is like, this is from here and this is from there, so I'm.
I do think there were like eight emails today.
Yeah, there were a lot.
All in one day.
There were a lot.
Some of them were the same information. But I got one that I thought was, I know we can't do this right now. But I thought the idea was incredibly good. It's to hold a new virtual misinformation escape room at your library. And it's done as a game. Did you see it?
Yeah. Have you ever done an escape room? They have fun. I did it with a group of college friends that.
We did one at the library before.
I just, it just looks like such an important topic right now. But I know it's just too much to do right now. But I just thought it was kind of interesting and I just wanted to mention that web junction in case. Is everybody else getting it?
I'm sure I did. And some of it is that I'm juggling, first, the email that these all come to is not my work email. Somehow it's like school in here figuring it all out. So I'll make sure to go back and.
This is interesting.
And I do want to say to the board, initially I was sending Erica a number of emails, but I was, I didn't put your middle initial.
They went to somebody else. She's probably very confused.
No, they were probably, well, I wasn't getting them rejected to me, which is why.
Right, just someone's dumb.
So you are getting all my emails now?
Yes, now I am and it's all good.
Great. And just a last item on that, I just want to remind the board that on our, during our September 13 meeting, Matt actually brought it up, but I support it 100%. If any time the board wishes to conduct a survey coming from the board, an information that we want to know, it wouldn't be a situation where we would be stepping into the operations of the library. It would be a matter of us conducting a survey. For instance, example that we were talking about at that meeting was specific to library hours and trying to figure out whether people were pleased with the library hours. We can do that because again, that's not interfering with operations, but rather gathering our own data. And I bring that up because it was, we explicitly discussed it at the last meeting as an item.
Excuse me, Mary.
Yes, sir.
The other thing is that the member trustees and Friends training events that came out recently, I don't know, Suzette, whether you want to, I think I might have forwarded to Linda today. But there's a, here's a Friends sharing with Friends Coffee Hour that they might find useful. And Erica, there's a trustee orientation that's on there that's virtual. It's in the evening. And then. For the trustees, there's deep dives in the collection development policy that we might want to look at. We've got one, we did some work on it some years ago, but it might be interesting. And I just, I, there's a lot of good information in that that might be helpful.
Are you going to save that?
No, I haven't. So you can take that one.
That'd be great.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Dee on the agenda, the letter Dee, in case you can't hear me through my mask.
These were our virtual meetings, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry. I wanted to bring up the weekend hours vote that we, I participated in in 2019 because at the time I really didn't feel comfortable being the only person who had an issue with, the specific vote was on whether we could on, on holiday weekends with, Monday was a holiday, if, if the library could be closed on Saturday. And at the time, I'll be honest with you, I just, I, nobody pressured me overtly in any way, but I felt uncomfortable coming against that. But I fine with the foster son. We spend a lot of time in the library. And sometimes when a weekend comes along, you know, if you're not going out of town to do things, you're kind of looking for structure or a space to go, especially when you're kind of looking for structure or space to go, especially when it rains and whatnot. So I wanted to bring that up. If anybody else had any comments or concerns about how often on, you know, specifically on holiday weekends, like Memorial Day, it would be closed on the Saturday, or if it was the 4th of July, for just another example, then that Saturday before the 4th of July would be closed. So I just, I wanted to just bring it up, because I didn't feel comfortable at that time when I voted to actually have a different opinion than the Board, so, does anybody else have that concern, or is that just mine?
You know, somebody else, if they want to start, go ahead.
I guess my only piece is that, valid or not, is moot at this point. I think the piece comes, we're in a weird timeframe, regardless of hours to discuss it. I know we had a big discussion at that time, because I remember bringing up, well, what about like school vacation weeks, when it's really a long weekend that becomes the week that is at work, and Jean would provide its information about it not being overly busy of a time or certain pieces, but I feel like we're in a stagnant spot on the topic in general, just because people at large are not really sure where they're coming back to things, and--
Okay.
I'm not sure, I mean, I know it was a policy that we all set up and have out there, I just don't know if we have the ability to make the right decision--
At this time.
--now, based on the current state of the world.
Okay.
You know--
Thanks for letting me bring it up, though, and I appreciate your feedback.
I'm glad, you know, for me, at that time, I thought it was a good way of trying to give time to staff.
Yeah.
It made perfectly good sense.
Yep.
And I think that's what is so annoying now with the not being willing to open at 8:00 on any night. And you know, that, I, I'm not, I'm not interested in making a trade-off on that, but I know how important it was for us to support that, and to acknowledge that we were going to do that. And we did that. There was no other reason except for staff, and so that they would have some periods of time that would be off, that they could be guaranteed several days in a row that didn't require vacation. And I just wish now that we get serious with these hours as well, but I understand about what you're saying too, Jen.
I just think we might, we might need to have the conversations again. The question is just, when is the right time to have that?
When life is normal again, I guess, right?
Well, I think, I think at some point we get the pull of the trigger and say, "Life is normal, we need to do X, Y, and Z," and acknowledge that there are going to be days when maybe no one comes to a building or an office space or whatever, so I just don't know when that, that might be the right time to evaluate it.
So I would like to address a couple of things about it. The decision for hours, the final decision rests with the Town Manager. It's not within the authority of the Board to take a vote. If you've taken a vote, the vote doesn't count. It's not within your authority to vote on that.
Did it count when we took the vote before?
Yes, it did.
We created a policy around--
It did not.
Yes.
So you don't have the authority to create a policy on anything to do with the building or the hours, that rests with the Town Manager.
With the Town Manager asked us to do that.
She did. She was being collaborative and asking for your opinion.
No.
It wasn't an opinion, we were asked to create a policy on that, and we agreed and signed and have a policy around the hours, and what led to the other days.
And the Town Manager would be the one to decide to accept that based on what her final decision is. So that hasn't changed. Under the Charter, the Town Manager has--
Oh, boy.
--the rights for all of these, for the authority. So it was a collaborative discussion, the actual reasoning part of it was so that the library could be more in sync with the town. It really only ends up with, I think, two different days out of the whole year of making a long, it wasn't like this blanket thing, like we got all these Saturdays off. Some of these aren't even, are union-based, so there's a lot of things that we have to consider. It only ended up being two, maybe three, and that was so we would be in sync with the town, because the town had the, you know, those days off, and the library didn't. I can tell you, hands down, so many people are so happy that we get the day off. We hear that all the time. "You work so hard, glad you got the long weekend," every time. So it's really, you know, it's not proven to be a problem with the patrons either. So you could take another vote again, but again, the vote has no merit, you cannot, you don't have the authority to take a vote on it.
Jean, thank you for telling us that we don't have that authority. I feel that I'm perfectly aware of that, but thank you for reinforcing that.
You're welcome.
I will not stop making some suggestions regardless. If they get, all of them get ignored, that's perfectly fine. It doesn't really matter anymore, because that was clear from what the Town Manager had to say. But my voice isn't going to be silenced unless somebody's going to arrest me for saying it, I don't know, that's possible, I suppose. It would really move to the level of total foolishness.
Okay. Any other comments? No. Okay, the next item is "You Belong Here." We were invited to Sturbridge Library, the Joshua Hyde Library, on October 21. I invited the Library Board, but I also invited the Auburn Cultural Council, because I'm a member of that as well. Want to talk a little bit about the origin of kind of what caught my attention? Can I just ask you, is that a camera there? Camera, okay. So basically, I wanted to just share what got my attention and why I was so excited about it, in reference to diversity, inclusion, and equity. I was visiting a friend in Sturbridge, and I just caught my eye when I was driving by this poster. And what caught my eye about it is just "You Belong Here" and just a representation of a couple, obviously a biracial couple, but it was something that I haven't really, I haven't seen a lot of this. And then I started looking at the other representations, and obviously, there's an individual in a wheelchair. "You belong here." Two individuals, I'm not sure if it's related to relationship, or religion, or belief, or creed, but nonetheless, it's just a really neat, warm picture of two very happy people that are smiling. Again, just cultural diversity, "You belong here." And again, "You belong here." I was just really, really curious where this came from. So I called up Becky Plimpton at the library, just because I wanted to know, and she basically told me this story that I want to share, and then I have some things that I want to just pass out. As a Director of the Joshua Hyde Library in Sturbridge, Mass. for the past 11 years, Becky Plimpton has consistently made an effort to be inclusive, affirming, and welcoming to all its patrons, but in the spring of 2020 presented a unique challenge. Massachusetts, along with the rest of the world, was on lockdown to curb the spread of COVID-19. Becky's team hung a pride flag on the outside of Joshua Hyde Library to show support for the LGBTQ community. When a Black Lives Matter sign appeared on the library lawn, Becky made a conscious decision just to leave it there. Then she received negative backlash that the messages on inclusion were not welcome. Becky pondered, along with her team, how the library could demonstrate an active stance to support diversity, equity, and inclusion. In partnership with the Board of Trustees, the Sturbridge Cultural Council, and local coffee shops, she created this "You Belong Here" campaign. Her vision is to include as many, as many voices as possible, and a safe place for learning. So she, well, those are the posters that were outside, and she actually gave them to me, I'm going to give them back after I have the similar presentation to the Cultural Committee. But what I loved that she talked about, and you can jump in here, but she talked about all different types of diversity. She talked about having talks about healing oils from the Bible, and people from different, you know, cultures coming in and talking about their culture. And what she talked about that was very moving was how much positive feedback she got, that they just sort of opened up this opportunity for the community and made it very educational. And I asked her, she had these books out, these are the books that they're, that they're, you know, that they're promoting, and what I thought was really neat, and I asked her to talk about it a little bit, was on the inside of the book, it says, "Joshua Hyde Public Library Community Read." This book is free for you to take. We just ask that you read it and return it to any of the following locations when you're done, so that others can read it too. The other locations are the Cedar Street Cafe, Sturbridge Coffee House, Sturbridge Senior Center, Sawdust Coffee House, Hubbard Physical Therapy, Oodles of Noodles, and then she lists the book discussions in the website. What I thought was really cool was just how, can you just pass these around? I just wanted to, here you go. I just thought it was, you know, as Jean was talking about earlier about partnerships, partnerships are so important, especially when it comes to, you know, learning and sharing, and she also gave me these book, these bookmarkers for everybody, as well as these buttons. She's making it a full, so if you want to just take a button and pass it along. But I just wanted to take a minute to talk about it, because I was so excited about it. And what I shared with her at the time, and I'm just going to share this out loud, because I think it's really important, what caught my attention about this was, when I was 18, I was a nanny, and the couple that I was a nanny for were biracial. Dad was African-American from Washington DC, mom was actually from Italy, but she had all these feelings about not wanting to be attached to her Italian background. So they had six sons, and the little boys used to come to me and they'd say, "Mary, are we black? Are we black?" And I would say, "That's not a conversation for the nanny, you need to talk to your mom and dad about that, that's a mom and dad story." And so I approached my, I call him my uncle, because he's more like an uncle and a mentor, he's the person who gave me that expression about, "You can't get the goat." But I said, "What's going on with this? How come you don't talk to your kids about race?" He said, "Do you know anything about race? Do you know anything about being black?" And I said, "I don't know. All I know is that what the kids keep coming to me, and I keep sending them back to you."
You've got these books for that one.
So when I saw this particular--
You do?
When I saw this particular poster, it popped at me, because it made me think about--
I know it's young.
How the kids, the kids didn't, they didn't have an open, safe place to talk about their own cultural background, which was Italian and African-American, and it took years for the family to feel safe. And Bill's feedback, because we talked about it in a less, you know, escalated fashion a few times, because he was initially very defensive, he said, "You don't know what it's like to be black." And I said, "That is absolutely correct. I do not know that. But these guys keep coming to me, it's a dad conversation, it's not a Mary conversation." But as, when I saw this, I just, I realized how often we don't talk about that families look all different ways, and I just thought it was awesome, so I wanted to share that. It's hard to talk with this mask. So these were the books that she passed out, I just wanted to share them. I am going to give them back to her, she was nice enough to give them. The other thing I wanted to say about this was, she used the Center of Hope in Sturbridge, which is a program for people with special needs, and they create like graphic design. So when she had the opportunity, she gave them the business. So is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I think you've really summarized it very well. She was just so energetic and excited about this, and it sounds like it's working.
Yeah, it's awesome.
She had a few notes, little Post-it notes with ugly statements on it, but not a lot.
No.
And they were mostly out of the, where you return books.
And they were about family values.
Yeah.
So our comment was, clearly all these people have love, and the library's making a statement that people are welcome, regardless of what the structure, or, you know, your family looks like, or feels like, or--
That's right.
So cool. Thank you, guys, for letting me do that. You know, I was excited about it, I've been talking about it for months. The next, the next, I have to say, though, my whole background is about inclusion and about partnership. So when Jean was talking earlier about the Chamber of Commerce, that just, that just excites me. I just love to hear that people are working together, especially in a community like this. Okay, the next question, the next item on the agenda is BOT questions for the Library Director. Does anybody have any additional questions?
I do just have one question, and it's not really related to any of this, it's actually a question about, I got an email about my daughter's library card needing to be renewed. And just in case other people have questions, I mean, she went to the library for school before COVID times. So is that something that happens, and so how does that work then, when we're working with the schools and hoping to get library cards to kids? Does it need to be renewed? How do we, you know, communicate that?
You should contact me off-board--
I will.
--because it would be a patron, even though you're asking me--
Sure, sure.
--if it's a patron violation thing, privacy thing?
Yeah, yeah.
And every situation is a little bit different, kind of depends on where you got the card, and what the age and--
Okay. I figured it was something like that.
But definitely, just give me a call, send me an email--
Sure.
--we can definitely look into your particular situation--
Absolutely.
--and answer it for you.
I was more thinking too, structurally, if this is something that goes out, and people go, "Wait, what? I've never earned a renew--
Yeah, it's system-wide, those come from the Systems Office.
Gotcha.
Every two years, you have to renew your card.
Oh, good to know.
And that's Systems for the 150 other libraries in the CW, so--
Gotcha. All right, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
And thank you for bringing it up, because I got the email, and I just hadn't asked about it yet, because I was told that I, you know, via email, that I needed to renew mine. So the next meeting, our next meeting will be with the joint, joint meeting with the Board of Trustees, Board of Selectmen, excuse me, to interview, we initially had two applications, one person stepped out, so we have one interview. I would just ask that prior to that meeting, I know Jen said you won't be able to make it, if you can provide me with your question, I think this time--
Your question has been technology-based, is what I asked last time.
Okay, great, great. So if we could just formulate what our questions are, mine's about inclusion and diversity. So that meeting will be Monday, November 22, across the hall, with the Board of Selectmen, and if anybody has--
What time?
That will be at 7:00 PM. Thanks for asking. And by the way, thank you for your email, you know, addressing the fact that it said that it was a Tuesday, and it was a Monday. So I went back to Sharon at Town Hall, and she apologized for that mistake, but she said that it was, I think she said it was the 23rd, and it wasn't, it was the 22nd, which is a Monday.
Do we want to meet at 7:30 after that meeting?
Well, you know, that came up, I wanted to bring that up to the team, if there's some, if we would like to do that, and we can, we can certainly do that.
I don't know.
I encourage it versus meeting with, what, seven, 12 days later?
Yeah.
First of December.
Oh, I, that's, yeah, that's, instead of that, the single meeting.
Yeah, that'd be my two cents, but I will be here on the 22nd either way, so--